Yes, we're open now. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you want to.
All right. We are going to open the Board of Selectment meeting at 5:02 for Monday, September 14, 2020. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance. Do the flag, the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have anybody on the Zoom meeting? None, that makes it easy. Let's see, we will do the warrants. Jason, can you read those?
Yes. I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 21-11 in the amount of $174,995.84.
Second. The motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 21-11 in the amount of $1,428,124.35, which breaks down the town, $166,525.14. Water and sewer, $31,813.99. Payroll withholding, $43,311.99. Light bills, $59,332.00. Grants and revolving, $206,585.32. Kentucket assessment, $920,855.41.
Second. Motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Right on cue.
Look at that.
Right on schedule.
We should have some music for you to come in on.
Did we decide we're going to wait on the approved minutes? On all of them or only on some of them?
Maybe make it all just because it's confusing right now. I made little edits on many pages.
So I move that we table the approval of the minutes until such time as the corrections are forwarded to us.
I'm hoping for the 31st because that little section's going to be quite large in the 31st.
They're just, they're small.
Yep, that's fine. All right, appointments, we don't have anything and then... All in favor for motioning?
Table the minutes, yeah.
COVID discussion. Claire, what do we have?
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
We have two more cases and nothing acute. Two brothers at the same address. So I asked some questions and it seems like one of them had a friend over. And so it's probably because the friend tested positive after the fact. And it sounds like that's where it came from. But they're both in college and doing classes remotely so they can just carry on doing what they've been doing. And they'll be on quarantine till 31st, I'm sorry.
What's the total number of cases now?
Forty-eight.
Still not terrible.
Not earth shattering.
No. Happy we've been able to be able to keep that low. So we had discussion last week on yard sales. And there were a couple of yard sales that I did happen by. I thought they were...
You went by them?
Well, just by happenstance because they were on streets that I walk on. And it seemed like they were pretty well maintained from what I saw anyways. I don't know if you had any updates on maybe what you've seen or...
I didn't see anything, but there's some days that I don't go out, you know, I don't leave the driveway. So, and I didn't hear anything from anyone.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't notice any large gatherings or people congregating without masks or anything like that. But I mean, I wasn't out crawling, I just happened to see a couple of them. Did you have a question on that, Bill?
No, I saw the same thing you did, just, you know, going through town. There were a couple of yard sales, but it wasn't, they didn't seem to be crowded.
High control.
They didn't seem to be busy. They were nice days, but I didn't see, I didn't see a lot of traffic at all.
No.
You know, people are really, you know, especially the older folks that are stuck in their home. They really are.
I think most people have kind of settled into how to react now and how to conduct themselves, you know, that, that kind of thing, which is great. You know, it took a little while to get there. But I think now it's more comfortable and understanding what people should be doing. Some, I mean, I was tested the other day, so.
I know several people who haven't gone to a store since March.
Really?
Which I was blown away with that information, but yeah.
Did you have anything else on yard sales or...
No, we're going to go to the hours, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ed, nothing else on yard sales? I know you were, I think you were for them last week, right?
No, yard sales, okay.
Okay. Next up, as far as the public opening of town buildings, review Friday and evening hours. I think things are getting done. I think the process that's in place is working well. I haven't heard of any issues with people not getting correspondence with, you know, paying the taxes or excise bills or the town clerk or anything like that. I don't know that we need to change the policy at this point, but we can certainly talk about that.
I'm pretty out there every day and I haven't heard any issues with not having accessibility to town hall.
Services. Ed, anything on the town hall?
Yeah, I think it's time we look at opening things up.
You want to open things up?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to look at that. And, you know, other places are starting to open up, other town halls are starting to open up. I think we need...
I haven't heard of anyone opening up, who's opening up, do you know?
Yeah, no, not offhand, but, and I see it, I see it in the newspaper, different places are opening up. Maybe limited, a limited amount of people in the building. But maybe that's something that we could get a recommendation from the Board of Health. Do they think we're ready to open it up on a limited basis?
Jason, anything on all hours?
No, I think we're good where we're at.
Status quo, Catherine?
I think everybody should work from home at least on Fridays. They shouldn't have Friday off anymore. I mean, if we're paying them to work 30 hours a week or 35, they should be doing that. So Friday, we gave originally the Friday off, I thought to kind of like lower stress, give people more rest. But now things are opening, schools are opening, people are working their hours. So even if they're not physically in this building, they should be able to be contacted during their Friday workday hours and respond to emails during Friday workday hours. And as far as...
Were they open eight to 12 on Fridays, was that the normal?
Well, that's because they were here Monday, well, only some of them, there were some people that even weren't even here Monday nights, believe. So I think we need to probably go through and sort that out a little bit. But as far as opening up the building, I have been in touch with the accountant about the COVID money and this, you know, putting some things up to make it a little safer for people to enter. And one of the things that I think we need to think about is who's going to monitor the door to see that people are coming in with their mask on? Do we need to have, if we're going to open up the town hall for a certain amount of hours, do we have to have a monitor there to make sure that the people coming in are coming in appropriately and not just walking in and someone in here runs into them and says, hey, where's your mask? You know, most doors have somebody who's observing that you're coming in with your mask on. And at school, I know we have people at the doors that are going to watch the students come in, different doors, and make sure the masks are up. So I think we need to address that. In this building, I would like to see that we get into the touchless washing and use of the facilities touchless. It's not a very expensive upgrade because that now the public will start to be using facilities if they're in here. I don't think it's fair to have the town employees wiping it down. I mean, if it's touchless, then everybody's responsible for themselves is what I'm thinking. So if we could get that money freed up and do that and maybe put some self-touchless sanitizer stations throughout the town hall so that people that are coming through for a meeting would have that. I think we need to do that first before we start letting everybody in here. Just, just to make sure everyone's comfortable and feels safe and all that. So Ellen, I know the town accountant was going to meet with Denise and get up to speed. So she was doing that this week and I told her I would give her the list that I've been getting in the library. The fire chief's doing a list, police chief's doing a list, highway's doing a list, and then town hall.
Mike, do you, only because we're at 11 people in here, we're not supposed to, do you mind sitting down until Claire leaves and then come back in? Thank you. I can count.
You're good. So that's my thing, I think they should be available now Friday during the workday, I guess, because we're not open Monday nights. So whatever it takes for their hours to round up to what they're supposed to be, I think the department should just do that.
Okay. All of that?
Yeah.
Bill?
Yeah, I caution against opening anything up too quick. There was an article in the Boston Globe today that mentioned the levels of coronavirus tested at the Dare Water Treatment Plant have been on the rise in the last couple of weeks. And according to historical data, that's usually a precursor to rising COVID levels in the state. So I just want to be here on the side of caution. We've gone this far, done this well. I'd hate to jeopardize any of that good work by being too quick to pull the trigger on anything.
Ed?
Just getting back to quickly about opening of town buildings. I think we have the avenue for, for somebody to monitor. We have plenty of money we got from the state for COVID. We could hire somebody on a part-time basis to monitor the door and make a decision on how many people in the building are...
I think that needs to be pre-approved before we...
Spend the money.
Right.
Pre-approved by the state.
Right, so if Ellen can run that as far as preapproval, as far as opening, if we do decide to open and then...
Have a monitor.
Get a monitor and have that pre-approved, then we can go and spend those funds. Because if we spend the funds and it's not pre-approved, then we owe them.
Then request a preapproval. Because at some point, at some point, the town hall is going to be open and there's a good chance of using some of that money if it's, if it's allowed. And it sounds like it's probably, if you read the paperwork, something that could, could be done.
So Catherine, can you run that by Ellen?
I'm Ellen Conduit.
You're the...
I'm the COVID conduit.
So Catherine, can we run that by Ellen?
Yes.
To...
I'll add that to the list because, yeah.
To get preapproval on that and then maybe by the next meeting, we can determine whether or not we want to look to open it in October or whatever the timeline looks.
But if Catherine wanted to check with each department in here if they're satisfied with their plastic, if there's anything inside of people's offices that they need. I mean, or we could set up the back conference room is already set up for meetings, isn't it, with plastic or not?
I don't think so.
Okay, because we could set up one meeting room if people need to meet with a few people.
Because I think that this, if we did decide to open it up, if we did vote to open it up whenever, October, November, I think there's going to be quite a lot of time to make sure that we're paired both with plastic and shields, a monitor of who's letting people in, number of people in, the hours and stuff. So that's going to take more than a couple of weeks to ramp that together. So we can start looking at that now and then whenever we vote on that, we have that in place. Agreed?
Agreed.
Fantastic.
But meanwhile, Friday, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding. Monday through Friday now, I believe the water and sewer department is working full time or not? I mean, I think we should be working no more Fridays off is what I'm saying. If someone's working remotely, they work remotely on Friday. If they come in on Monday through Thursday to the highway department, to the water and sewer, they come in Friday now.
I think it's appropriate to look at Friday hours now.
Well, because I don't want the work to get all piled up and then the snow to come in and then, you know, we're done with any projects, right? That's it.
Ed, what do you think on Friday?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it makes sense, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
At the Labor Day?
Yeah.
Bill, Fridays?
Yeah, given the person doesn't have that, you know, extraordinary childcare circumstance that, you know, is basically chaining people to their homes with their children.
So...
Should I make a motion?
Wait a second, before...
Okay.
Jason?
I agree.
You're on Fridays. Before we move forward with the motion, I have gotten some requests for off-hours.
Due to the childcare issue.
Due to child and schedule, so Caitlin now is doing that? Yeah, all right, so Caitlin has a spreadsheet monitoring, who's making the request, what days they're asking for, what that looks like, just so we have an idea of when people are supposed to be working remotely or in the town. And then the people who have requested the remote working, they do have internet and computers, either a town laptop or their own personal laptop. So they are, they are working during those hours. Motion, did you want to...
Okay, so the motion would be that we're going to return to our regular business hours, except no evenings. Does that make sense? So, and also accommodate whatever remote work schedule is necessary according to our personnel. Is she our personal director, Caitlin?
I think she's the acting.
Acting personal director, according to our personnel, our acting personal director.
Starting when?
Next week, what's the date Monday?
Twenty-first?
Yeah, twenty-first, let's start on the twenty-first.
You're second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just as long as we make every reasonable accommodation to that.
No, it's part of it, yep.
Absolutely.
And yeah, that doesn't change, that doesn't change.
That's the question, maybe we should add something on there. If a member of the general public is looking for a in-person meeting with a department head or an employee, they should be able to grant that even on a Friday. If they want to come in and they, they got it, they send them an email, they call them on the phone and they, look, I real, I got to sit down and talk to you about this. They, they should be able to do that.
Do you want the department heads to make that call, whether they can do in-person meetings?
No, I think we should have just allowed in-person meetings, let the department head tell them when, when is, when they can do it. But, you know, some of these people just want a, an in-person meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that we can force in-person meetings.
We're not set up for that yet.
I would say, you know, the less contact we have, you know, if we can do it over the phone, I think, you know, it's great. Things have been working and rolling pretty well since March.
Forty-eight is a bad number based on the population. And I'd hate to have, open up some other avenue where that steadily increases because we decide...
You know, we have to worry about the school right now, you know, and make sure that that is like, you know, on track. And they're being safe and doing everything that they need to do to stay safe.
So you are not in favor of in-person meetings?
Well, I'm, I guess, I guess I'm a little ambivalent about it.
I would think that we table the in-person piece of that, at least for another two weeks.
I wouldn't rush into it, to tell you the truth. I mean, I think it's going to come eventually, but...
I think eventually, but I think, honestly, I think things are going to change by November for the, not for the better.
I think the cases are going to pick up.
Yeah.
I really do, you know, the kids are...
Kids are kids.
Kids are kids, they're having parties and they're having a good old time, you know.
So...
The, the other thing is, I don't know why it wouldn't be possible to call, email, and make an appointment. I think that what we want to avoid is a rush of people going to any one department where there's four or five people outside the door, three or four people inside the door, you know, waiting. Maybe if people were to make an appointments with these department heads.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, so that, you know, there isn't a stampede for an office, but it's more systematic and scheduled.
Yeah, I would leave it up to the department head, but have you talked to anyone that said that they want to request in-person meetings or just this kind of general planning?
Just in general. You know, there's, after this coronavirus thing started, you know, a lot of people that would normally come into the town hall to transact business person to person, and they haven't been able to. Maybe they're holding back, the same way as you have people that aren't making doctor's appointments because they're, they're afraid of this. So we got to get back, we got to get back to normal living.
One second, Jason, anything?
I think the appointments have already been happening. I think people have been calling in and meeting people outside in the parking lot and I don't really see that that being an issue.
I just think that we should take the time to make sure we get the monitor person, the touchless systems in because once you start having people in here, that impacts all of the employees that are in here. It's not just the person they're meeting with. And I feel like we need to just make that, take the time to make that step. You know, if they need to have, if they have to have a meeting, I know the council agent has been doing it outside in the nice weather.
Yeah, I think that's been happening selectively.
I think that, I trust the department heads, but I don't want to just say on TV tonight to tell people to call up and make appointments because we're not ready for that to be happening on a regular basis at this time.
Right. Bill?
And it not only affects the employees, it affects the employees' families, their, you know, close circle of friends, potentially. It is something we have to safeguard against. It's not just the person that we come in contact with, it's the person they may come in contact with.
Good point.
So we have a motion and a second, we've had discussion. All those in favor? Fantastic. The other part to that was department head office hours, which I think are going to be pretty consistent to what was submitted. So I don't know that we...
We already did that.
Have to talk too much about that. And then a little bit, we touched on school reopening plan. We're on a kind of, my kids are on a hybrid plan, some kids are totally remote. I wasn't too impressed with the structure of today's classes, but we'll find out how, how that kind of gets adjusted as the weeks go on. Did you have any other input on that, Claire, as far as the schools?
You know, we have a good nurse here at the Bagnell. Her first name is Amanda and she's very conscientious and she's checking with both myself and the liaison of the nurses for the schools and the towns that are involved. And, you know, she's, you know, she's only called us, you know, emailed us twice, but she's been right on in what she said. But she was just wanting to run it by us, make sure she was saying and doing the right thing. So we're lucky to have her.
Anything else you want to add?
Congregation of children in small places is always a concern to me and I wish we could find a way to do more testing. I know my son is at Franklin Pierce and they are randomly testing all students on a continuing basis, whether to be symptomatic or asymptomatic, which I think is, is the way to go. This way they can catch it before it becomes an issue, before it potentially spreads to other students. So I wish that all the schools...
That's great.
In our district would do more testing so that we could find the cases before they became issues. Unfortunately, we lack the resources to do that kind of testing on a more frequent basis. So that's my only wish, I guess, hope, dream.
Anybody else at that, schools? No, okay. Claire, I think you're off the hook for the night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you can exit, we can bring in Mike Dempsey and rotate the numbers.
Yes, and thank you again for...
Thank you, Claire.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
What is probably the most difficult year of our lives.
This year has not been fun.
It's been a challenge.
Yes.
Challenge is an understatement.
This year has not been fun.
But we appreciate the hard work for sure.
It's a lot of work, Claire, thank you very much.
It's a lot of people working together.
But it's a lot of work.
And that's what you have to do in a situation like this.
Just wish we had more people working together so we could really nip this thing in the bud.
Need a vaccine, you know, that's...
But even now, you hear what they said? Twenty-twenty-four, before there's enough vaccine to immunate the world effectively enough to have this under control. Because everybody's going to require two vaccines, two shots. And even the world's leading vaccine producer says it's unlikely to have enough in supply before the year 2024.
Depends on which television station you watch, I think. I could flip the channel and get another report.
I said I'd volunteer for the first round just to see what happens.
They're potentially looking at fifteen billion doses.
It might be Spider-Man, you never know what would happen, right?
Right.
You don't make fifteen billion doses overnight.
No. Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Sorry, we have to maintain the numbers.
Sure.
Michael, it's so nice to see you again at our meetings.
Thank you.
I didn't know if we'd have to call you and make sure you were on Zoom, I didn't know you were going to come in person, although maybe I forgot, but...
We might have to do a wellness check, what are you doing?
So next up, we have 7:33, Salem Street Purchase Parcel, 68M Town Council Review, Mike Dempsey. So to be honest with you, Mike, I'm a little bit lost on what we're doing with this stuff. Because it seems to be a little bit of cross-information on what council is supposed to get back to us with, some kind of approval, and what you're waiting for. I honestly, I'm kind of in limbo.
Sure. So everything is proceeding. One thing we were waiting for was for the check on the status of the property. That was done and Town Council sent us that information. There was some conflicting statement on there about lack of access. But the reason why we're buying it is because it's between two of our properties, so we're not worried about that. And then there was another item regarding an easement. I got a copy of that plan, actually, the planner for the Dahulus is sending me a copy of that plan. So we'll have that just for backup purposes. But at this point, we're waiting for the Dahulu's attorney to work with them to get the final purchase and sale and everything all in place. So I suspect this is primarily being held up just by the lack of being able to get together one-on-one with their attorney and everything else. Because this was, you know, started, we were pretty much completed and agreed on the negotiations way back in May. And, you know, here it is, September. So I heard from them last week and she said, you know, she's planning on getting together with the attorney. So that's what we're waiting for, is for their attorney to send back to Town Council and then Town Council will send us the purchase and sale, which you can then sign. And then we can execute any of that stuff and then pay them and have the closing.
Do we know when we expect that information from Town Council? I haven't seen anything in a couple of weeks.
No, no. Based on what the Dahulus said to me, I'm not expecting it for a couple more weeks.
Okay, so we don't need to put this on the 31st agenda, 28th agenda?
No. Yeah, no, I, I'll be in touch with Catherine and I'm following up with the Dahulus in addition. So either between her or I, we should hear from them or Town Council that they've got it.
All right, so this is going to be pushed to October?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions for Mike on this topic?
Just want, on the town meeting vote, I actually remember that, that we voted favorable to be completed by June 30th, 2020. Of course, with this COVID thing, it doesn't seem like that's been an issue in this going forward beyond June...
No.
So as long as, as we stick within what this article allowed for funds and everything, right? Because council's not saying anything in their opinions about this.
Right.
And they have this.
Yes.
They should have everything.
Then I'm fine.
Jason, anything for you?
Nope, I'm good.
Ed, anything for Mike?
Uh, no. Uh, no.
Bill, anything for Mike?
No, not this time.
All right, so I'm going to jump around a little bit here so we can go right to Sewell Street. Is that all right with you, Mike, since you're already here?
Yeah.
You had submitted some information about some of the fill for Sewell Street.
That was the extra packet.
That was the extra, extra packet.
Oh, there's an extra packet?
Yeah.
That's this extra packet, I think I have it.
So, Mike, can you summarize what this extra, extra packet is?
Sure, so I think it was at your last meeting, because I had been asking Kathy about the status from Mass DEP regarding what they had to say about the filling. In the meantime, you wanted to know what was going on with their, the applicant's court decision regarding their appeal of what Mass DEP decided. So I did find out from Mass DEP's Office of Appeals that they currently have a meeting. Their next hearing is scheduled for November twenty-third. And the appeals judge recommended that they negotiate some settlement between Mass DEP and the applicant. This pertains to the stream that runs through the property, whether it's intermittent or not. And.
Intermittent stream, sometimes it's.
Intermittent means it dries up.
Yeah.
And it doesn't, it's not as protected as a perennial stream. So perennial stream has a two-hundred-foot buffer resource area on it that we have to treat. So, so we're not expecting any news on this potentially until at least November.
Or December now, if it's the twenty-third, then you're not going to hear anything until December. Or after the twenty-third, which is going to be after Thanksgiving, which is, you're going to be in December.
Right, right. So, you know, I had asked Kathy what Mass DEP said. Mass DEP came back and said basically they're done, you know, they're not willing to ask for anything new. And so this falls on the town then to put anything into a local permit for the additional fill. So I would recommend that we issue the local permit with those conditions that we had discussed back in May, I think it was.
That was ages ago. Do we have what those conditions were?
Right.
They're right here on this thing, the ten, ten things, additional testing, the bond to protect the town over a twenty-year period, consulting chemist or scientist services.
I got it, yeah.
Yeah, it's right there. So we never issued a letter for the new parcel, whatever you want to call it, the additional piece of property from D V A C. And that's why DEP originally, initially reached out to us. So it's kind of confusing that they tell us, well, he's allowed to fill this, but you're allowed to have input. And I'm just, I'm kind of, am I saying it right? I mean, this is kind of what it narrows down to. They want to hear our concerns, however, because it's a core, he is allowed to fill it.
Right.
But the way you've laid out these concerns in here, especially with the extrapolation of the contaminants and the, and the language of the additional fill, I think is, if we could include that from the first page into the conditions maybe as a way of making it stronger, like what these conditions are, that might be helpful. I mean, I myself, from going through the pages, looking for, that's how I stumbled on that page. It shows the loads, that what's happened is the loads are delivered, they're checked before delivery. They're checked, they get cleared, they get delivered. The monthly person that checks usually isn't there. He comes in, looks, yeah, randomly, looks over for the site wherever the new soil is being staged, goes over and takes a sample, and has had fill returned. Now, all I can imagine is he just decides how much to say have returned because it's there. You know what I mean? It's not like it's in a bin, it's there.
Right.
So, you know, the good news is it's, it's some, not all of it's being returned. You know, there's ones that are being tested at the point of pickup and then being brought to delivery and being tested again and being okay. But on the same token, there's ones that are tested at the pickup and brought here, and they're not okay.
So is your suggestion to submit this whole?
Well. The DEP is telling us to formal, formalize an agreement with the applicant outside of their jurisdiction, right? Okay. So those ten items are.
Yeah, and you had already issued a permit for the initial filling.
Yes.
So, I mean, those conditions probably could stand, and we could add these additional ones in. Any ones that, out of that that you think makes sense?
Number six, though, I think is hard because of the, there's no cost to that insurance policy.
Is that not complied with the bond, no?
Well, that's a performance bond.
There's a performance bond, but there's also an insurance bond.
Insurance policy, that's, I'm.
Because we're adding seventy-five thousand dollars, that's a performance bond.
Right, I agree. Did you have an example of this kind of, is there another, is there a town around us that has had this kind of an insurance policy?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I think that one. I like the idea of the additional testing, I think you said that, right? The ten, ten additional tests, they're about, what, five thousand dollars a test or five? It's not that much money to do the additional testing.
While you're looking through that, Jason, did you want to add anything?
No.
Ed, did you want to add anything on this?
Yes, just a clarification, Mike. That under, under number seven and under number five, what, was that okay with DEP?
Five and seven?
I'm sorry, five and six.
Seven and six?
I, well, I think Kathy can say, DEP didn't come back and say they objected to any of these things. They just said, pretty much.
Submit what you want.
Yeah, and we, we, DEP can't ask them to do more testing. That, that's pretty much all he said.
Is that a state law?
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I, I'm not sure where they get that from, but.
They're following the state guideline for the testing that goes on now, but we can request additional testing.
Well, you can request it, but basically the state law says they don't have to comply with it. Is that what I'm hearing?
The testing of the perimeter wells is yearly right now, I think, once a year, maybe? They have perimeter wells up there.
Once a year, yeah.
Once a year, but I don't recall how many years it's for. We've discussed this before, like how many years we wanted it for.
But this says ten years.
Well, yes, as I think.
That's what we're requesting.
That's what we're going to ask, yeah.
It, right, the way it is right now, when they're done filling, they don't have to test anymore. So the problem with that is if, you know, five years go by and something that they buried there is finally leaching out and could potentially show up in the wells, we would never know it.
Correct. And so this also resolves the issue the developer member said, I, you can't test at your well site because look what's in between my land and your well, you know, Chesterton and other businesses and homes, you know? But if you're testing up at the site, that's specific, that would tell us.
Well, it seems to me like, and I'll get to you, Phil, on a second, seems to me like we can ask for this, but it doesn't mean we're going to get it. Is that the gist of it?
Well, probably.
Realistically, is that?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to, you're going to get pushback from the applicant, but, you know, give and take.
One, one second.
Yeah.
Ed?
I'm all, I'm all set.
I think they're testing once a year while it's in, in construction, and we're asking for more because it's going to be private property. We would, even if we were going to do it ourselves, our warden sewer, we would need permission.
Right.
Right, so that, that should be able to be negotiated, I would think. That being able to test those well sites up there for ten years, we should be able to negotiate that. The one that I don't, I don't know how we can do anything about is number six because I don't know how you completely protect the town with an insurance policy. I don't know what, I think the developer will say, what are you talking about? And I don't know.
Here, here is one solution that, that might work is, right now, I've been working with the Zoning Board of Appeals as far as the permit process for the forty-B that he plans on building at the site. And so at their last meeting, I was asked, for instance, at the last meeting, I was asked because they're going to completely waive our wetlands bylaw to come up with all of our conditions that we would normally put in a local permit. And now, whatever they can negotiate back and forth of those conditions with the applicant, they will then put that in the forty-B decision. So I would say number six can be put into.
Part of that, yeah.
Yeah, throw it into ZBA's hands, say this is another thing that we want.
Bill?
No, I remember six was clearly rejected out of hand by the developer at the time we bought this initially.
At the time, yeah.
And.
What does that look like? What does that?
I can understand his point, I mean, twenty-five years from now, twenty years from now, how do you know it was me? So that would be a very good suggestion on how to bypass this and get it written into some other language that we can enforce later on down the road.
Right.
The, the issue of well testing after he's finished is, can that also be incorporated into this?
It could be. I mean, probably most of these things could be incorporated into the forty-B project. The only advantage to putting it into the filling requirements is that it comes into play right now versus, because he's filling not, you know, he plans on starting sometime this year or early next year. Whereas the forty-B permit probably won't be out there another year from now.
Yeah, and I understand that, and if we could get the state to go along with us, that would be great. But it seems that the state has certain requirements, they're meeting those minimum requirements, and they're not willing to go even an inch beyond that at their own cost. It'd be nice if we could get them into this agreement, but without the state forcing their hand, I don't know if we have the ability to force their hand against what the state has already said. They meet the minimum requirements. Sometimes I, I think the state is just doing this so they.
Reversing it.
So we feel like we had a say in it when we really don't.
Right. And that was kind of my comment.
They're kind of stroking us, really, but, you know, we have no real power, is what they're saying at the end of the day.
A common theme, we don't have any power to do anything.
Well.
Well, it, it's sad because, you know, I think I made this comment before to you. If, if there had been a specific, a specific frog or, or turtle in that area, this whole multi-billion dollar project would have been stopped in its tracks in a heartbeat. But sixty-five hundred tax-paying residents have absolutely little to no say at all in what goes on there. And it's kind of a sad commentary on where we are as a society that, you know, the people that have built this community, at the end of the day, have little say in the future of the community. Right?
Yeah.
So, Mike, what do you need from us regarding?
I guess you should probably decide, I think, like what Bill says. Either we ask these ten items to be put into the local permit that's issued for filling.
But you're, what we're going to do is ask that ZBA accept these as conditions that we're requesting in their negotiations with the project.
Yeah.
That's basically what you're asking.
Yeah, I mean, either one. I mean, you could put it into the local, but as Bill say, says, you don't have a lot of ability to enforce him getting it into it. Whereas with the ZBA, you're throwing it into the mix where they're approving the whole project, and he's going to be more likely to do some things that he'd rather not do.
So we're, we're basically going to vote on this so the ZBA has some background as to where we fall on our concerns and to throw these into the negotiations and basically do what they can.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just had a couple of questions for Mike. On number one, when you say no additional soil, other than that already approved, are you then referring to any fill that's being brought into the new site that's going to be basically donated to the town for conservation? So no, you're not trying to stop the fill that's being brought to the site that's already in process?
Right.
Okay. And then, well, you said mark the limit of new fill with the line of double-stacked hay bales. What is, is that to separate each delivery or is that, what is that for? I don't, I don't quite understand that language. On number two.
Is that for erosion?
I think that was to separate the two areas.
Okay.
But, you know, throwing this into the mix of what is being asked under the ZBA permit, probably even in that case, makes more sense because we've already trying to address where he's putting his erosion controls.
Okay, so should we put it in both places? Should we draft, because we have to draft something for the seventy-five thousand dollar performance bond. And I, what I don't want to do is to send two different messages to the developer, I want to be consistent. So could we put this in our agreement as well and, and reference that it's going before the ZBA and that wherever it gets accepted or negotiated to, as long as it's being done?
What were you asking?
That we have to do a letter for the additional seventy-five thousand dollar performance bond for the town protection, that's us. The ZBA doesn't have anything to do with that.
Right, but that's part of the thing, I, I thought that that'd be part of the thing that we're requesting them to throw into the negotiations. But that has to be a letter that comes from us?
Well.
Or I think so.
For instance, on the testing, ZBA, as I say, they're not going to be able to do anything with that because the fill will have already been done by the time the ZBA permit is issued and really doesn't address what's going on now. So maybe just pulling out of here the things that go directly regarding the filling and the rest of it can be sent over to ZBA. So if you want, if you want, I could look at these more closely and say, that one should go with the fill, that one should go to ZBA and let you know.
Actually, if you want to do that for the next meeting, that'll give us clear indication of what goes where and what should fall from us as far as, like what Kathy was saying, for the number two and number four.
The one I was.
Four.
Four.
I know, four, thank you.
So if you can do that, Mike, and then give that to us for correspondence or actually probably another agenda item for two weeks from now, that'll make it a little more clear as to what we're requesting and then what we're throwing over to ZBA to throw into their negotiations.
Yes.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Ed, does that make sense?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kathy, yeah?
Yes, I just want us to start copying each other between us and the ZBA so that they know what we, just on these items, not on everything they're doing, just on that we cross-copy each other on this stuff.
So Mike can send emails crossing everybody off, but nobody on the board can do that.
Because we appoint them?
No, because they can't have correspondence back and forth on each board without violating open meeting law.
Okay.
So Mike can say, ZBA copying selectmen, and then none of us respond to it because we can't violate open meeting law.
Okay, 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 sure. That, anything, all I'm saying is that because they meet separate from us.
Right.
And we can't.
But Mike can be the go-between.
That'd be great, thank you.
I think.
Needs one more thing to do. Sorry, Mike.
Well, I'm pretty deeply engaged in this thing with the ZBA. I can't believe how much time I had to spend with these conditions.
That's a lot of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you look at it real quickly, it's five, six, seven, nine, and ten.
Probably.
Well, if, if void's having something like what happened at Valley Screw.
Yeah.
It's, it's worth every minute of time. It's, it's worth every minute of time.
So, Mike, we're gonna leave that with you. And then, you know, as long as everyone knows not to reply all, violate open meeting law and all that fun stuff, then we should be okay. But correspondence coming from you to the boards should be all right. Um, I think that's it for Mike.
I'm good.
Now, he could send it to Catherine. Catherine could disseminate it to us as long as we don't respond at all. We're all good.
But I don't know that, I think, you're not on the ZBA, right?
No.
So, you can, you can send us all information, as long as everyone understands that that's it, that the one-way conduit of information, and no one replies all the share and copy thoughts on it, then we're not violating open meeting law.
Right. Because what I, I will send you also what I sent to ZBA, which is the list of wetland, just for your information, so you can, when you're looking at this, you can see why some of the things I may have moved out are in the other one.
Okay.
Okay. You're off the hook, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you again, Mike. Um- It's a head of the missus.
Let's move on to social media discussion and policies. I'm gonna turn it over to Jason, since he was-
Yeah, instrumental.
Thank you so much.
I like putting you on the spot.
Thanks, I like it too.
So, you had gathered several, several, um, policies from surrounding towns, and I think you were going to collate them into one for us, too?
That's what this is, right?
To look into?
Yes, and you should have had it in your packet.
It is.
Somewhere. Hold on. Hold on. Scrolling, don't wait for me, go ahead.
Scrolling.
Most, most, most of this came from the Groveland Police Department.
Good.
Okay.
Um, which was really well done. Um, I just added a few things, especially to the, to the last page, where it, uh, talks more about personal social media. Actually.
It starts on page three and goes like that. Yeah, no, it's a nice, you wrote this one down?
Change that.
What's that?
Bottom of page three into page four.
I'm still scrolling. Don't wait for me. Bottom of page three and two, three.
I did, uh, contact Jim Day.
Oh, okay.
And I got a copy of their policy as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was really bare bones.
It was, what, bare bones?
Yeah.
So, the police one was much clearer, more precise?
The police one was, was perfect.
I like this one. It says here. It says refrain from using social media while on work time, or on provided electronics.
Town provided electronics, yeah?
Yep, unless it's authorized by a department head.
Mm-hmm.
That's perfect.
Well, you should all times be respectful to everyone and refrain from making comments protected under state and federal anti-discrimination statutes. Provide electronic consulting services, lack communications on town, provide electronic part of public record as directed by Massachusetts Public Law. Yep, people should be aware of that. Violation of laws to be written for all the cases with appropriate authorities assumed. Anybody have any questions on that?
Well, this is straightforward.
Well, this whole thing stems from one email.
One email or one post?
Yeah, one post. Okay, I, I don't do all that Facebook stuff, 'cause it's all garbage to me, but, um, there's three, there's three paragraphs that specifically address the personal social media. And I think that's why this whole conversation came about. How do we, uh, protect free speech while also protecting the town in, in the same, in the same way? I know there was one, there was one that I, I read, I can't remember who it was, but it, it, uh, the policy was that a town employee must identify themselves as a town employee, even in their personal posts, so that there was a transparency as to who's posting it, and it's not just, um, kind of out of the blue, but there is some kind of connection there.
Is that on their personal page or a public?
That was on their personal.
That can't be right.
It's on page three, too, on this, on this agreement.
It can't be right.
Terms of service agreements on social media usually require that you use your proper name. And if it's found that, it says right here, employees must be aware that their true identity is discovered, their account can be disabled, investigation may be compromised.
Right, but I mean, I have my own personal Facebook page, and if I go to a public page, like The Crier, that's, that's a separate domain than my own personal page. So, you're saying that on my own personal page, if I were to put something, I have to say, "I'm Mike Wood, I'm a Groveland Selectman, these are my own personal views." That doesn't make sense. I think, I think what you're looking at is, one is free speech, free speech, which is my personal page.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one is a public page where there are many different people on it, not just my friends, that then you're representing the town. That's how I took it, and that, that's how it was explained to me.
But usually, when you join one of these places, you know, like a domain, like the Town Crier or something, you agree, you know, to put your name in, you know, you're not supposed to, I can't put, I can't join, I'm not supposed to join the Town Crier under the name of Michael Wood and then start posting.
Well, there's only one me, but you couldn't do Kathy Smith and then post your own stuff.
But I mean, I think that it's addressing things like me going on saying, "This is Jason Mays, and this is what I think about the Town of Groveland." You know, this, this is what's prohibiting people from doing that, these terms. And I think most of these sites, when you sign up, um, that's what you're agreeing to. And I know, I think even Facebook, you know, will kick you off for things like this. Like if somebody says, "I didn't make that statement on Facebook, I don't know who this person is that's using my name." I think they will investigate for you and do something.
But that's not what you're saying, right?
No, i- i- it's-
I'm not sure what he's saying then.
He's saying that even on my personal page, I have to disclose that I'm a town employee, and these are my own personal thoughts.
No, you don't have to do that. You just have to be aware that people might look you up.
It's that gray line between free speech and... You know, I didn't yell and fire in a crowded theater. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm against kind of restricting any kind of speech, only because it, it, it just seems so anti-American, I guess.
I don't know.
Out of it was criticism against us, which I, 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 look, it's part of the job, I mean, so I-
Uh, yeah, I mean, what you're talking about as far as criticisms towards us personally, I don't care. Against me, I, I don't care. Um, but to the other board members, the other volunteers, the other people in town, I care about that.
That was disparaging, and that was unfortunate, and that was, um, not called for.
Right. But I think, I think what you're talking about is two separate things. I don't think my own personal page is a public domain, because that is set up for my friends and my network, where a personal page like The Crier or The Truth or whatever-
Right.
Is a collaboration of town people who joined that page for whatever reason.
Right.
And that becomes different speech. Ed, do you have anything?
No, this is, uh, this is actually better than some of those ones that we, uh, we received from different towns. Uh, but we should run this by town council to make sure that everything in there looks okay. Uh, but there is a, there is a fine line. Just because you're a town employee doesn't mean that you give up your, your right to free speech.
Right.
Uh, and that's, uh, that, that's, that's a, an, an area that, that, that should be protected. The town employees should be able to, uh, people, town employees, volunteers, they should be able to, uh, on their own time, impose the truth, uh, and while they're not slandering, uh, people. Again, they have a right to free speech, and that, uh, but this is pretty good.
I think it's very good.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with the free speech. Everybody has the right to say anything, except when you slander other people. And when it starts to make the town look bad, then it becomes an issue, and the town has a right to protect itself, just like every business. And, uh, that's one of the reasons why it was so complete, is because we didn't have one.
Right.
Even though it was brought up based on one, uh, incident, we still didn't have one, and we should've. And we looked at all the other towns, because they already had it. And, uh, the most, like I said, the best one was the, the, what the police station had, the police department. And that was phenomenal.
So, is that what we-
That's where ninety percent of that came from.
Is that what we wanna do, is take this draft, run it by council, make sure that they're okay with what we wanna proceed with as far as social media policy? Ed said yes.
Um, yeah, I, I think it's a foregone conclusion, if it's almost verbatim from the police, social media, which I-
It's the ten percent that I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Rather than to say, it's pretty close.
But now, this post, the original post that we're talking about was kind of a person on their own time, posting on their own personal-
No, public page.
It was a public page.
Yes.
And public meaning, public meaning belonged to the town, or it belonged to the Boston Globe, or belonged to-
It belonged to a forum that anyone can join.
Belonged to a forum that anyone can join, like Facebook?
Not my own personal page. Yeah, oh yeah, it was Facebook.
Okay.
But it's a forum on Facebook that anyone can join, as opposed to my private page where I dictate who's allowed to see it. I think that's where the clarification comes in. But as part of the question, I'll have town council review this and then clarify that for us.
Then the debate goes back to Mr. Watson's point about truth. Who's truth? My truth, your truth, his truth, her truth? What is truth?
Well, there's three sides to every story, right?
Exactly.
East.
Three sides will never agree.
Right.
But this, this is a good policy. It protects, um, other employees from an employee putting their information without their consent on public platforms and brings into, brings to the person that would do that, that there may be consequences on their employment side from this kind of action, which is, is reasonable and just. It also, um, racism, discrimination, harassment, I mean, all of this. We, we don't have anything that does this right now. I mean, it protects the workplace to be a place where people can work and feel free of, um, being labeled or harassed or in any way, um, impacted through social media that would make them uncomfortable working for the Town of Groveland.
Yeah, and the most important thing is-
That's important.
Social media is public. Anybody can see it, everybody can get access to it. And, uh, like it states here, "The internet holds no secrets." Sooner or later, somebody can stumble across it, find it, and that makes it public.
I agree, it's something that, it's clearly overdue. I just worry that it's an overreach in some, in some parts.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why I agree that, uh, city council really should take a look at it and give it a blessing.
That's my only reservation.
Okay.
Okay.
I will add that to my growing list of things to talk about.
Things to do.
In my spare time. Um-
Delegate.
Next up, we have free little library to be installed at Washington Park. I think this was, Kathy, was that you?
Yep, we just, we just need a vote. I, I thought that we would have, um, put it on, they said they could put it on a structure or on a freestanding, um, hole, post. So, I thought it, it's okay if the board votes, if the highway department could assist with the post for them.
Yeah, I think a post is probably best, but that's my opinion. Ed, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, it's a great idea. These are starting to prop up in, in, um, several communities. We-
They're mostly on posts, though, right? They're not-
Yes.
Yeah, we have one up on School Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
Up on the left, if you're heading towards Georgetown. There are one down on Main Street by the old library.
Yep.
People can remember, uh, people can remember where the old library was. Uh, but I, I see them in a lot of communities, and they're, they're pretty well receiv- very well received.
Yeah, but they're, but they're mostly, uh, their own structure, they're not attached to like a wall or a house or anything like that?
No, no, standalone structures usually.
Bill, anything?
Get kids to read more and play games less, and video games, all for it.
Jason?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for it, and I, I thought the board had already agreed to this and volunteered the highway department to put up a poll over there way back when she came in and discussed it.
Couldn't, Mike and I were like, oh.
I mean, two weeks here seems like two years, so what happened three months ago, that's a whole nother decade. So, if you wanna make a motion on that-
Okay, but do we wanna pick a special spot in Washington Park, people? Do you guys have an idea where we should-
I haven't been there in years, so Bill's at Washington Park. Actually, Ed's over there, too.
Ed's over there. Where's a good spot?
A good spot for that is right.
Does the, the person who requested it have an idea of where she wanted to put it?
Uh, she just wants to know if we wanted to atta- wanted it attached to a structure or on a post?
No, I think we all agree on a post. Freestanding, but where, um-
Yeah, so she just needs someone to dig the hole for the post. She, she says if she can actually get the free, if she can, she has the materials for the post.
So, do we want it over by the playground area, or over by the dugout, the quantum hut thing?
Yeah, I'm trying to picture Washington Park in my mind, and I'm thinking Center Street, on Center Street by the playground might be the best spot.
What's that?
Oh, she said by the parking lot? Where is this?
In the parking lot?
In the parking lot?
Off to the side of the parking lot. We're not gonna dig a hole through the-
Oh, wait, great, I'm on to-
No, we just did that.
No, there's a sale in the library. Where did, no. I don't think she- No, 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 she said- Okay, you know, I know what you're, you're referencing, something else. I got a little confused, too. That's all right.
Ed, do you think anything particular would be a, a good spot up there?
Um, yes, uh, over, over towards the, uh, the playground, somewhere between the playground and the, uh, and the stand.
Yeah, that sounds-
Probably on the edge of the playground. You don't wanna probably put it in the middle of there.
Yeah, somewhere between there.
Yeah.
Or do they maybe want it down near the-
The playground gets, uh, gets used constantly, every day.
Yeah, I think the playground area, just outside the playground area, wouldn't be too much in the way.
Yeah, but it, not too near the building. We still have that, that mud wasp problem in the sand.
Oh, there's some wasps?
You know what I mean?
I hate that.
The sand pit is, they still have that roped off, I think.
There's that, that wooden railing there, and then there's the playground area. I'm thinking kind of like in that area. Is that where you're thinking, Ed, by the playground and that wooden fence where the parking lot ends?
Yeah.
Good? Kathy, good?
Yeah, that sounds good. You mean, up to the, towards the baseball field, something. When you say front, which is the front of the parking?
I'm thinking when you drive in to the left, there's that row of wood fence there that people park up against. And on the other side of that is the playground. I'm thinking-
Right there.
Right in there.
Okay, close to the road.
On Center Street.
Yeah, so close to the roads, it's visible. Yes, I'll make a motion for approval, um, for the highway department to assist with the installation of a post and a little free library at the front of the parking lot on the playground side.
Just as you pull in to the left, so that, uh, you can park right there?
Yes.
And, and, box will be right there.
I'll be parked.
Yeah, a second.
Motion and a second, I was waiting for that. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Alrighty. And now we have Harry Park parking. Who brought that? Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's still parking, like, between the area that we, they cut out. And I, I just feel that what they did up on Upper Center Street by Johnson's Pond with the rocks, to designate those parking areas, that seemed to do the trick. We, I don't know if we have a supply of those rocks, like an endless supply, but if, if you put at least-
I don't know that we have a supply. I think you have to buy them.
You think they bought those rocks? The big rock?
Is there a quarry here that have rocks that I don't know about?
Well, I don't know where they got the rocks.
I don't think they're just given to, I would think the state gave us some for Lower Center Street at one point, the, the curb parking and-
Okay.
But I, I think you either have to buy them, or the state has to get them.
So, here, these are my thoughts, real quick, is that you just, uh, put at least the rocks where you want them to park in between. I think the baseball backdrop makes a natural, "Don't go beyond this."
Mm-hmm.
But widthwise, there's no boundary.
So, are you talking like from the bamboo to the street side?
Well, I don't know how, I am talking mainly the dirt area that's been used over the years. It's not the whole, the whole length of it, but enough for like three cars or four is the most that I've seen there. And then, if they could put, the highway department put some, um, temporary no-parking cones along- along the rest of the way where you don't want people pulling into those reeds, you know, where they cut out and made the, just post it for a while.
Did that ever get rectified?
No, the cars still did, no. They gave them a letter, um, and, and we've warned them. So I think put the cones and then ticket them. Is, I mean, we've done everything a reasonable, uh, town could do, right? Everybody there got a letter and said, please stop doing this.
Yeah. Anybody have any thoughts on this? Jason?
I think, um, I still think it's, when I sat in on the Elm Square Committee.
Yeah.
Um, Rebecca has that all listed as undesignated public parking. And right now in Groveland, there is no specific guidelines to undesignated parking. I know you were concerned about people parking overnight, um, and beginning to park overnight in other areas. But unrestricted public parking like on Elm Street, people park there overnight. They head in parking in front of the restaurants. People park there overnight. Cause it's all undesignated public parking.
So are you saying Rebecca needs to define that?
I think because she is utilizing that in some of the things that she's doing.
Yeah.
And since she's a town planner, I think we should definitely take her input and what should happen with the parking there and what it should be utilized as and labeled as.
Good point. Ed?
Like this, they've been parking there for forty plus years and, uh, it, as long as there's, there's no damage or anything, uh, it, it, it ought to be able to continue, uh, they're not hampering anybody. The, the complaint that we originally got was, uh, encroaching on the town property, filling in town property. We found out that, uh, they might have cut down a, a tree that, uh, was, was diseased. Uh, I, I, I don't see the problem with it. Uh, and I, several years ago, forty plus years ago, it, that was, people would park there for the baseball field. And, uh, that was, uh, it was used, it was used quite a bit when kids weren't playing with their, uh, computer games. And I mean, if you can imagine the outfield out there, where, where it went up, went up a hill, it's a pretty good grade. Uh, I, I can't imagine them playing baseball on a field like that today, but they, it was done back then. It, it, it's worked fine. It, it, uh, I, I would say, leave it alone.
Bill?
I can't imagine playing in a baseball field like that either, but go to Rockport High and that's how they play. The right field is literally straight up, right behind second base. I've never seen anything like it before. But I have to say that I drive there, by there quite a bit. And it went from six to eight cars to three to four cars. And I only see one that's consistently there. And I don't see it there during the day, so it seems to be just an overnight parking. So I don't know whether word got out or people are just more responsible or considerate. But I see that problem has seemed to.
Fix itself?
Beginning to self-control, it, it self-police, I guess, itself, where I just don't see the number of vehicles there parked overnight, uh, lately as to what we saw consistently.
Two months ago, yeah.
Two months ago when this, uh, subject first came up. So I'm not sure how much we want to do that isn't already kind of being done behind the scenes without our involvement, just kind of the invisible hand of, of government kind of pushing it along without making any drastic rules, changes or things like that.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, to be honest with you, I hadn't really looked at it, drive by, cause I got a thousand other things on my mind. But I do like Jason's point of checking with Rebecca on her designation of that area and then kind of coming back to it. I don't know that, to Ed's and Bill's points, that anything's being damaged there. Um, and I do think that people have taken notice about kind of fixing that behavior. But I kind of like at least talking to Rebecca and see what she thinks about that area. If she has any other kind of plan that we're not aware of.
Why, make a motion and we move the conversation, uh, to the next meeting, um, contingent upon Rebecca's input on the subject.
Could we, um, add?
We got a second then, then we can have discussion.
A second.
Second, all right, discussion.
And just add to it, um, that, you know, I, my concerns are like the visibility of people pulling out from between the reeds. Like I have no idea if someone was parking there till I distinctly looked and saw the car in there. And do we want people cutting out their own parking places? I don't think so. And then it becomes, sometimes it doesn't look bad and then other times it becomes looking like an abandoned junkyard. And again, it's our town property and well, how we treat it and what we do now will impact what happens ten years from now. So I think let the town planner designate parking there and then hold people to that area.
So, do you want to connect with Rebecca and find out what her status is on it, since you brought up the parking?
Well, he went to the meeting on it if you want.
Yeah, but that was, how many moves ago was that?
I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, so nobody knows.
He has no memory. Look at, he's washed his, but fine, I'll, I'll talk to Rebecca.
Well, you brought it up as far as an item, so if you want to connect with Rebecca, see what her status is of it and then report back to us for the next meeting.
No problem. It's not even on your list. Take it off your list.
That's one less of the thousand things I have to do.
I'm going to recuse from the next item.
All right, fee schedule update for the River View Cemetery. Kathy's going to recuse herself from this. Um, so there was a fee proposed for the.
One of the commissioners is out in the hallway.
Oh, is he coming? Yeah, you want to get him in? Thank you.
Oh, step on it. Oh, you got a haircut.
I didn't recognize your rock.
I'll just stand.
Yeah, all right. So do you want to provide just a quick overview, Rock, of the schedule update? I know you had sent it to us, I think, the last week or two weeks ago.
Yeah, in front of it explains that we're just going to raise the traditional burial fee from a hundred to fifty. Uh, we separated the Saturday overtime fee because it was less confusing and taking the fact that we have to have somebody in there at overtime. And we just increased that so we're able to pay for that. And we were, we had a small, uh, one of those PDF things and we just, uh, two thirty people, five, a little too expensive for that. So we dropped that down from a hundred to fifty dollars to use it.
Okay.
Most of the, most of the funeral funds have been on anyway, but just in case something happens and we got one in the garage and picked up, so we can, uh, put it up if needed.
Ed, any questions for Rock?
Uh, no, it still leaves us, uh, one of the lowest in the area.
It does.
Bill?
No, I've, uh, reviewed this since our last meeting, found the request very reasonable and I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, new fee schedule as, um, proposed by the cemetery commission.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Jason, any comments?
No.
Yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable at all. Um, you guys do a great job down there, so.
We've come a long way in the past few years.
Yeah, it looks great down there, so I appreciate your hard work. So we got the motion and the second, discussion. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rock.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No problem.
Could have done it without him.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we'll put some hors d'oeuvres out there for you too.
That was around the corner.
That, that was pre-COVID, we had that.
Kathy? All right, next up is Selectment Times and Reports. Um, we'll combine that with all their unfinished business. Jason, anything?
Yeah, I just want to get the, uh, dog park, the location of the, of the possible location for the new dog park on the next agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I had a, uh, park patron find another grant for additional funds.
Good.
So I'm sort of excited about it.
Kathy, can you add that to one of the items and then we'll discuss that, uh, prior to the posting? Anything else?
That's it.
Kathy?
I think I covered everything.
Selectment Times and Reports and unfinished business, so.
I had one thing that I wanted to question about. Um, at the old water and sewer building on Washington Street.
Yep.
There's a rusted water and sewer truck with no wa-, no license plate. Parked in front of it.
All the time?
It seems to be.
I ran by there this morning. I don't recall.
It's there. I went, I was, I did my walk around today. It was there. I'm think, how could it be there? Where did it come from?
Underneath.
There's no plate.
You want to ask Colin about it?
Sure, just ask Con, so nobody else knows anything, right?
That was the, uh, water departments. Uh, it was stored under the building and they moved it up top. I, I believe that's going to be a declared surplus soon.
Do you know when Colin's supposed to submit that?
Or request to declare it surplus.
Do you know when Colin's going to make that request?
No.
So we're showcasing it?
Maybe we should bring it next to the veto.
Okay, I just was like, wait a minute, they just cleaned up the.
All right, so let's wait and see what Colin has on the schedule with the market data surplus and then we'll deal with it then. I don't remember seeing it this morning, but.
Okay.
I was huffing and puffing. Uh, Bill, anything for those three?
Uh, yeah, first of all, um, there'll be a walkthrough of the new high school, uh, middle school on the twenty-third, which I'm looking forward to attending. And relaying some of that information back to this, uh, committee and to the townsfolk. Uh, and while I have the opportunity, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge, thank, uh, some of the great people that were here on election night, uh, that did a fantastic job, uh, starting with, uh, Beth Cuniff, uh, town clerk. And, uh, just to recognize publicly all the great folks that made the election here possible and run smoothly. Uh, Jennifer Close, Laurie LeBlanc, Ed Reed, Dave Tuttle, Kathy Greeney, Susan D'Angelo, Francis Slattery, Evelyn Tuttle, Dorothy DiChiara, Janet Nolan, Mary Ann Cassoli, Laurel Buchowski. I know I'm butchering some of these and I'm so sorry. Marion Hodges, Maria Frederick, Catherine Young, Judy Gosby, Suzanne Credit and Renee Laurenti. Thank you so much. Uh, because of you, um, we did have an excellent turnout, nineteen hundred and eight votes. Uh, fifteen hundred were mailed in and that was an extraordinary, uh, accomplishment by these, uh, volunteers that were able to get all those votes counted by election night and get the results out to us. I look forward to those same folks working on November third. I know it's going to be a long night. We appreciate your dedication to the town and to the voters of, uh, Groveland. And we look forward to your service on November third, so thank you very much.
That was it?
That's it.
Ed, anything for those three things?
Uh, nothing.
I don't have anything, I don't think. Let me rattle my brain as to what's been happening the last few weeks.
You hired for the assessors yet?
No. We're supposed to have the, Denise is doing the job interviews.
Okay.
I don't know how many applicants we have.
Yeah, she's doing pre-screening, right?
Yeah. But I think she's doing that on Fridays, so I think we're good there.
Because, not to add more to our list, but maybe take a, a, a look around about whether we need to reallocate some of the office space to space people out more when we make that changeover. Thinking more the council and agent is in a fairly small space with more people.
I think once we have everything in order, we can start looking at that.
Yeah, okay.
But that's probably going to be at least a month out.
Right, a month out.
Other than that, I don't have anything. And then the other item's not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. We have the email from Caitlin resigning as a temporary town clerk.
For one oh six King Street. Can I get an explanation on that? Is it no need for her services? Is that why?
It's done, um, as Kathy stated, but I think somebody else has to be appointed as temporary. No?
I don't know. I'm assuming that the, it's, it was done. She, the town clerk had to, should recuse herself.
Recuse herself, right.
Because.
It was a single house development, right?
Uh, no.
Oh, it was more than one? Okay, I'm sorry.
It's nine or ten.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
And it's an ongoing project, so I'm not.
I think somebody else has to be appointed temporary town clerk.
Yeah, because as far as I can see, Mrs. Cuniff is still going to have the same conflict with her husband as the G C on that.
So she, this is a letter officially, her, her official resignation letter as the temporary town clerk, but we do need to find another one. Um, so Beth is not, um, violating, uh, conflict of interest.
Probably Caitlin taking on the new duties.
Yes.
Okay.
So we need to find someone else to do that if, um, anybody wants to volunteer for that. Not us. Um.
Does it have to be someone in this building, right, to, that stamped the plan?
I believe so, yes. So can we get a motion to adjourn at six twenty-five?
Motion to adjourn, uh, Groveland Board of Selectment meeting at six twenty-five P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Oh, what about, uh, where's that one?
I'm going to meet with Annika. Thanks, Brett.
We're not going to publicly recognize him? Okay.